Good evening. Welcome to the Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. My name is Angela Ryan and I'm President of that League. We're very grateful to the Van Buren School District for allowing us to hold this forum at Belleville High School. Tonight, we welcome the candidates running for two positions on the City of Belleville City Council. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for any office. The League does take positions on issues after careful study, so you may see our name attached to an issue that we are advocating for or opposing. Membership in the League is open to all persons 16 years or older, so if you're interested in joining this public service organization, please let us know. We have membership applications with us tonight, or you can go to our website, which is lvwnorthwestwayne.org, and you can either print it or mail us a check, or you can join by email. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one tonight. The League is also preparing a nonpartisan voter guide, which can be found online at www.votfor11.org, or in print at the Belleville Library in early October. You can also find the link to the voter guide on our website, lvwnorthwestwayne.org. And in case you don't remember all these websites, there's this little bookmark on the table out front, and if you did not pick one up when you came in, pick one up when you leave, and all the websites are on the back of that. If you would like to ask a question of the candidates, and we encourage this, please write your question on a card and hand it to one of the ushers in the aisle. Actually, we have one usher, the lovely lady. Our moderator will ask as many questions as time allows. Questions should be brief, to the point, and should not include personal attacks on the candidates, and it should be a question that all the candidates will answer, because they all are getting the same questions. We reserve the right to screen the questions for duplication and clarity. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator, League Member Virginia Belinski.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Belinski, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. We're pleased that you could all join us tonight to hear the candidates running for the two seats on the Belleville City Council. As Angela said, our questions tonight are coming from the audience, and we have received some of the questions emailed to us in advance. Each candidate will be allowed a two-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to the questions, and a two-minute closing statement. We will rotate the order of the candidates who respond first. We ask the audience to remain quiet and hold their applause during the forum, so that we can get as many questions asked as possible. League members Manny and Donna Laven are our timers tonight, and League members Carla Bowman and Tony Clark are our screeners. The timer will be holding up the cards, so the candidates know when their time is up. It should be holding up a one-minute, a 30-second interval stop. Let's begin with Mrs. Kelly Bates. With your opening statement, can you begin, please?
Hello. Thank you for hosting the City Council. I'm very excited to run for Belleville City Council. I had moved to Belleville four years ago, and if you know me, you know that I'm very passionate about whatever I'm involved in. Being part of my city is something that I feel very strongly about, and I serve currently on the Planning Commission forum. I'm always looking to be involved and help out however I can. I previously served as President of Home Owners Association. And I'm looking to improve upon some of the groundwork that was laid by previous councils and current councils. There are some things that I think we could improve upon. I know not every voter can, or resident can come out and attend a city council meeting, so I think that it would be beneficial if we could have some sort of way that they could view that, possibly Facebook Live, or some sort of forum where they could see that from their homes, if not as great as able to attend. I'm looking to improve the city with some different resources, like upgrade our recycling program eventually, and to also implement some more health initiatives into our city. Mr. Markham?
I'd also like to start, I think, in the League of Women Voters for hosting, as well as Van Buren Schools, and everybody for taking time out of your day to attend this evening's forum. My name is Jesse Markham. I grew up in Van Buren Township, lived in Van Buren Township until I was 22-years-old, when I bought my first home in the City of Belleville, in the Harbor Point subdivision, fittingly enough, right behind us. I graduated Belleville High School, class of 2001. This mini auditorium looks a lot different than the one I was used to sitting in for student council meetings. And upon graduating high school, I was hired by Van Buren Township Fire Department as a firefighter. Attended Siena Heights University for a Bachelor of Public Safety Studies. I was hired by the Norfolk Township Fire Department. I got really lucky in 2002. I've been with the Norfolk Township Fire Department since 2002. As the, I'm currently Battalion Chief. I serve as the Training Coordinator, and it really just showed me a whole lot of the fire service, showed me a whole other level of public service, and handling emergencies and different events that go on, and really serving at all hours of the day. I'm somebody who's driven to learn. Learning is certainly one of my hobbies, and I mean that. Sometimes I take it to the extreme. I love research. And I've been a member of the City Council for almost one year. I was appointed last November. I was a member of the Planning Commission for eight years, previous to that, and I'm certainly centered on serving the public and public safety, which I believe includes police, fire, EMS, and roads, not to mention parks as well. So, thank you for attending, and I look forward to the rest of the forum.
Mr. Fielder?
Thank you for hosting us. Probably won't need those signs. I've known for my brevity when I answer them. But I'll try to expand on some things I might think of. It's sort of exciting that we're having a meeting here, because I think this symbolizes the philosophy I've always tried to bring to community service. And those here that have known me for a long time know what I mean when I say this, that I don't live in the City of Belleville, I live in the community of Belleville. I've always meant that. For example, even though we are in the City of Belleville, basically 100 yards from now, we're in Van Buren Township. It won't change your quality of life, and it won't change the way you live. And so I think, I'm excited by the opportunities to try to continue to expand on that. I could also talk about the philosophy that we have with all the things going on in Lansing and all the things in the world. You know, 99% of your everyday life is going to be dictated by how things are done at the local level. The classic line always was, "The wife and the husband said they had a 50-50 marriage. The husband decided world peace and the national debt, and the wife took care of those mundane things like the budget and shopping and making sure things got done around the house." And I think that's what local government has become. It's basically the one that does all of the everyday work, and I'm excited by some of the things that are possible. I'm excited by the opportunities that are still out there for partnerships with our neighbors. So I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to continue to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Vernon?
My name's Joe Vernon, and I've only been here, well, I've been doing business in Belleville for four years. I've lived here for two years. And that's really a unique situation. I came in from another company and just realized Belleville was similar to what I grew up with. And so this is a great place to be. This is a great place to do business. This is a great place to interact. I grew up in Toledo, Ohio, Whitmer High School, Penna County Vocational School. Got out of school, did auto mechanics, decided that was the wrong kind of grease for me, and got into food service for many years. And then went on to help out a business, small business here in the city. It happened through just another conversation similar to this, and they said, "I like your ideas. I want you to come and work for me." And I says, "I'm not ready for that." About six months later, I was ready to come up here. And I had been doing stuff from Toledo for this company, and we went through some things, and he says, "You know, let's try something new." So we opened up a candy shop, a joint venture. And, you know, everything's got its troubles, but the end outcome of that was the business that originally was in trouble is now doing really well, because we didn't give up. We kept going forward. And I believe that's the whole purpose of the people in the city, that they don't give up. They keep grinding away, no matter what's thrown at them, and I want to be a part of that. I want to continue to be a part of that, no matter what I do. I'm going to sit there and I'm going to do the best I can. I believe in the parks that are here. I believe there's some more activity that can be done in those parks, bring some more people in and do some activities. Joint ventures that have been talked about before between businesses and recreation. I think that's a great partnership to have, and a lot of cities build off of that. Belleville has everything that it needs, and we just need to keep struggling along and keep pushing on and work together as a team, because you can't do anything without a team, and I learned that a long time ago. And I wanted to say thank you as well for having us out here and giving us a chance to speak our views.
And Mrs. Hux?
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for so much.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm a little tired. I should say hi. I'm Gwen Hux. Thank you so much to the Women, League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I should say that I am traditionally a Southerner, which is why I speak softly, I think, that's part of my training. I've been in Michigan for five years, and I've lived in Belleville all those five years. I grew up in a very small town, very similar to Belleville, so it immediately felt like home to me. My background is in psychology. I was a Master's License Psychologist for many years. I am. But now I currently work in VA research, which I adore so much. Jesse said he loves research. I love working in research. And working in research has helped me to think more globally about the community, how things can get better. And I think, even though Belleville is great, it can always be better. There's so much untapped potential in this city, and I'd like to see that tapped. And I'd like to see some change, innovative changes. I think that because it's an older and smaller city, people tend to want some things not changed, but I think change is important. So that's why I'm going to visit again. Thank you.
Come on, just pass that out. Okay, our first question will go to Ms. Bates. What will you do if you're elected or reelected with Doles Landing, and how will you assist the condo owners on that site?
I think I would continue the partnerships that I've already set forth. I attend every single city council meeting that I can. I think I've missed three over the past year. And I've watched city council, along with the DPW Director and the Home Owners Association for Doles Landing, get together and talk about how they could partner in that. And I think I would just continue on that venture, so that it can be remedied quickly. The seawall needs to be corrected, so that it doesn't get further dilapidated, and I think I would just continue right on on how they've been doing.
Mr. Markham?
Well, it's the two jewels of our community, the lake and downtown itself. And as soon as you drive into town, it says downtown on the lake. I joke, I hope that we don't have to change it to downtown in the lake, because the seawall falls in. And that's certainly a priority to preserve that. That's one of our parks, and it's not safe right now. So there's some creative challenges with the funding of that, but it's going to require continued communication with the residents of that building, because it certainly affects them. And it's our responsibility to communicate effectively with them. And the other thing that is going to take, and I think this is a creative way, and Director Rutherford mentioned this, is divvying up which parts can be handled by the city, which parts can be handled by the seawall contractors, so we have a great product at a cost that we can absorb in terms of our budget.
Thank you. Mr. Fielder?
Yes, I, we've have done a lot of research on that. Let's just say that I think there's going to be some solutions offered sooner rather than later, because of some estimates that we've gotten back. Whether those are pleasant things to look at or not, I think is going to be debatable. In fact, I know that it's going to strike us as, this is an expensive solution to a problem. And then, you know, the usual approach would always be, "Well, how come it wasn't done right the first time?" And I guess the answer is, "I don't know." We assume it was. The only thing I can say to the, in defense of that project is, that, you know, the only thing worse than doing nothing at this point, I would say the only thing worse than letting it go would be to basically do nothing, you know? In a sense, you've got to do something, and you have some expense involved. Now, I don't, I think it's important for us to not just stabilize our area, but also make sure that the adjacent property owners have some sense of stability, also in terms of their seawall project. And I think we're willing to partner in that. We've already talked about it, as Jesse alluded, and there's an economy of scale also.
Thank you. Mr. Vernon?
I have to agree with everybody else. I think what's being done right now is, the plan that's in place is to continue on with that. My concern is, what do we do after it's done? Okay? So, we know that they're partnering with the condos over there. We know that there's a plan of action being taken, but what do we do afterwards? Are we, you know, what's the future of that site? So that's, and it is a park. So again, it's one of the things that I'm sitting here looking at, is, you know, what are we going to do with these parks? How are we going to keep moving forward? How are we going to use the parks to our advantage? And it has to be an advantage to having that there and strategically use it in the future. So, we can look at what's going on now and say, as far as I know, it's in the best hands it can possibly be in, but what do we do from there?
And Mrs. Hux?
Thank you. I think it's important to be, to continue to communicate. The City Council currently has a great plan happening right now.
Louder.
Sorry. Southerners don't talk loud. I'm sorry. I apologize. Pardon my training. So I think the City Council currently has a great plan, but I think it's important to ensure we're being fiscally responsible, that we know what the budget looks like. I think there could be a little bit more transparency, because I think the City Council and everyone sitting over here probably knows what the plan of action is, but the general public, I don't think, is very understanding of what's happening and where things are. So I think getting the information out to the public more, maybe some public forums, would help people understand that something is happening, and they're not just waiting until it gets even worse.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Markham. What will you do if you'd like to, oh, that's a personal. All candidates, what is your opinion of the DDA, if it is still needed or has it served its purpose in Belleville?
So the DDA, a little background, the reason it was created, which I believe was in 1975, was to basically ensure, a large part of it was that the infrastructure needs met the needs of the community, which is how Victoria Conings ended up being part of the DDA. And if you look at why the DDA exists, I think that that makes sense, to drive economic growth and growth downtown. I think there are things that be, that can be improved, and I think most of that improvement, frankly, comes from improved communication. And I think we need to work, City Council, DDA, Planning Commission, together, and I think it'd be great to be in the same room with one another, to pick the place that we want to go as a community, and then see how we each respectively work towards that goal.
Thank you. Mr. Fielder?
I've expressed these views many times. I think the DDA is a valuable program for community development. I always used to say that, you know, instead of looking at negatives, you know, what wouldn't we have if we didn't have certain things going on? For example, there wouldn't be Victoria Conings without the DDA program. We wouldn't have the Main Street, that many people that I know that come in and say, "What a great venue." For example, I just found out today that we're currently at 9% vacancies on Main Street, which has basically been unheard of for the last 25, 30 years. So there's got to be some positive things there. The negatives, of course, have been expressed. I think they need to be observed and looked at, but I certainly wouldn't be opposed to making any significant changes in the ability to fund things that we couldn't fund with the normal budget process.
And Mr. Vernon?
Well, I think, like pretty much everybody else, is, I'm still trying to figure out the whole DDA situation. I mean, it serves a purpose. Like you said, it serves a purpose, but I'm not sure going forward what that purpose is going to be. Is it, are we still going to fund things that not everybody has a say in? I was, frankly, you want to look at the positive, I've got to look at the negative. I was appalled. You've got development on Main Street, and not a single representative was there. City Council was represented, you know, the chamber was represented, some of the residents were represented. Where was the DDA representation? That's essentially downtown development at its finest, and nobody was there to say yay or nay. And so I'm probably the wrong person to ask that question to, because I'm still trying to figure out, you know, what do we benefit from? You know, roads, houses, okay, great, but there's some other things that we need to start focusing on, and it all plays a part, I believe, but...
And Mrs. Hux?
So I think the DDA is essential. I think it's an important part of the city. I do think that it could use some restructuring, and the way that the amount of power that it has, and the way that it goes about its business, could be restructured a little bit, but I think ultimately, the work they do is important, the services they provide are important, and I think it's needed for the city to continue to grow and develop.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bates?
Thank you. I think the DDA is still definitely needed. Like the City Council, I have attended all of the DDA meetings over, well over a year, but I think I've only missed just maybe two of those as well. Being that I was the President of Victoria Conings, I had a direct responsibility to communicate with the DDA. I think that they do a good job of trying to communicate out, but can we still improve upon that? Absolutely. I think Rosemary does a great job trying to put out information in the newspaper, but I think that we can still, as I mentioned, improve upon that. I think it really brings the community together, and that is a positive thing of the DDA. They organize a lot of our citywide events and make sure that people are in the know. And, you know, at the end of the day, we are all neighbors, so getting everybody together to have someone and work for important causes is important.
Thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Fielder. What do you see as the most pressing problem in Belleville, and how would you fix it?
The most pressing problem is always going to be the most pressing problem for local government, and that's going to be the ability to finance projects. I looked at it, when I was Mayor, basically, left in 2009, I look back at that time to the present. The amount of funding that local governments receive from basically the state and other sources, federal, it has basically decreased, not even stayed the same, to this year. And it's required a lot of budget angst. It's required a lot of creativity, and that doesn't mean we aren't capable of that. But I think the frustration has been that, I think of the flag that says quality of life, and we know what has to be first. You have to provide basic services, and it's difficult to do quality of life sometime when you are always worried about, you know, where is the balance budget, money going to come from?
And Mr. Vernon?
I'd have to agree. Everything's a financial thing, so everything comes down to the finances. So how do we fix that? Okay, so you've got vacant buildings. Let's fill some of those buildings. How are we going to do that? We're going to sit there and wait for businesses to come here? They're not coming here. The reason they're not coming here is that we're not on the radar. Where are we not on the radar? We're not loud enough. Let's get out there. Let's talk to some people. Let's take a look at a couple of beaneries over in Ann Arbor and Flint. Get them down here. Start off with a roaster right here in town. Start building off of that. Behind that, we come a bakery, possibly a grocery store behind that. You don't know if you don't get out there and start doing something. We can't sit and rest on our laurels. Okay, everything's great, everything's good. I've got a top three. Businesses, one. The roads are another, and Doles Landing and the parks overall is the third. And with those three things, if you start working on those and start making those financially feasible, everything else will fall into place.
Thank you. And Mrs. Hux?
I agree that the finances are important in a small city. We always have to be fiscally responsible, and I also agree that parks are important. But I think that the most pressing issue in the City of Belleville, given it being such a small town, is that there's a lack of communication. There's a disconnect. There's, you have almost a have and a have-nots. You have the people who are very much involved, you have those who aren't, and those who aren't don't get information. Because they don't get information, they're not passionate about the city, so they don't show up, and their voices aren't heard. So I think it's important to open up that line of communication and let them know that their voices matter.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bates?
I have to agree with what I've heard so far. I think that the budget is definitely something we need to address and see how we can stretch it. Just like in our own budgets at our own households, we always try to look at how can we improve the money that we have and spend that more economically. I know that the budget is limited, so that does become a constraint, but looking at items that maybe haven't been looked at in a while and doing a little review, that could help. I think that task completion and community support. There are a lot of ongoing projects always in the city, and we don't always know about when they're going to be completed. They are on the follow-up list at the city council meetings, but getting that information again out to the public or something. I also think that economic development is a big piece of that, and I, you may have heard me say in the past that I'd like to promote a slogan of "Come across the bridge" to Belleville. I think we have a lot to offer here. We could really highlight that with some marketing.
Thank you. And Mr. Markham?
I think the biggest challenge that we face right now is actually more along the lines of project management, in creating a consistent way of handling all the problems that we've already discussed. And I feel like we should be focused on the solutions of those things. And just recently, the council follow-up list is something that I brought up at the city council meeting, and I recommended that we change the format of that, and we attach the conditions, actions, and needs of every item, not only on the follow-up list, but really that we're working on, period. Whether it's a budget-related thing, and it involves us to be creative through grant writing, or some alternative funding sources, we all know the limitations budget-wise, but I think project management would go a long ways in the communicating what our vision is and what our plan is, and where we're going, how we're going to get there.
Okay. And the next question goes, starts with Mr. Morton. What changes in ordinances would you propose to improve business on Main Street in Belleville?
It's overall really overly restrictive in my vision. I mean, I've been through it. I've dealt with it personally, trying to build a business in an area where you have no vision, no, you're on a main thoroughfare, and everything that you would normally do anywhere in the world, you can't do on that main thoroughfare. We don't want, we don't want to distract drivers, we don't want, we don't want flashing lights, we don't want people knowing what's going on inside. Then you have to worry about how much of your window you cover up, even though you can't see inside the window, because there's six feet high off the ground, and you can't look in there anyway. There's, they need, I've been yelling about it for two years. At least, let's take a look at it. I get shot down every time. So in order to get any of those changes in, we need more people, more voices to say, "You know what? We're just not, we're just not comfortable with this." You know, "I feel good about the businesses that are here, but look at your Main Street. How can you find a retail business on Main Street with a little tiny sign? You've got to squint to see."
Thank you. And Mrs. Hux?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate just frustration and passion. I think downtown needs, even though it's a beautiful city, it does need some work. There's a lot of work to be done. And I think that I would have this beautiful vision of it looking more like a planned city. I think that would bring more people downtown with more retail. There has to be retail. There could be a thousand businesses open downtown, but those aren't going to bring people, or they aren't retail. So I appreciate the new construction that's happening, but at the end of the day, how do they help the city grow?
Thank you.
Mrs. Bates? So I think that we could definitely re-landscape a little bit how our downtown looks. That's one of the passions that I have, and that's one of the reasons why I'd like to be part of city council, and that's one of the reasons I'm the Planning Commissioner. We're looking at reviewing our master plan right now, so we can see how we could help to improve. I think economic development, again, touches on that. I think that once we start attracting businesses to downtown Belleville, we can really change that downtown and make it a place that people will come across the bridge to visit. I also think that we could revisit the 2020 vision and see what that looked like then and what it looks like now, and see how we can help to implement that and move our city forward.
And Mr. Markham?
So I think the first part of it is, we need a better way to address the, basically the aesthetics of Main Street and buildings that have not been properly taken care of over time, because I believe that serves as a deterrent to business owners from talking to them, that they're concerned about parking, they're concerned about the condition of other buildings downtown, they're concerned about the future limitations on that building, retail versus service. So I think a lot of it is going to take some compromise and good discussion. It's going to be something where we have to trust the process, the Planning Commission. I know they had a tough one recently involving one of the new buildings downtown. And I think there's plenty of people that come across the bridge. I think we need reasons for them to stop. And your limitations during the day versus at night, there's two different crowds, and I think we have to do a better job of blending that together and giving people a good reason to stop when they come across the bridge.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Fielder?
Yeah, I've sometimes been accused of being a dreamer when it comes to specifics. But my, my philosophy is basically based on the simple concept that the businesses are not naive. They do demographics things, and they've got to find out that people live there, and they want to do business there, and this type of thing. So you have to create the broad spectrum, basically, and I'm excited. Sometimes we look at all the negatives, but I'm thinking of the positives just within the last 10, 12 years. We have a state-of-the-art facility here, a school, that isn't just a high school, it's also doubling as a community center. We have a new library that will be done shortly. All of these things are attractions, they have to be built upon. As I said, in fact, Ms. Frazier talked, we talked about this yesterday or today, I don't know which one, about some of the older buildings and how to get them, require the landlords to take care of them. And I have nothing wrong with that. In fact, our planning commission, the plan is expiring. We're going to have meetings on that, and hopefully we can talk about this.
Thank you. And the next question goes to Mrs. Fox. What, if anything, do you think could be done to make Belleville a more diverse community?
Diversity, I believe, is important, hence, just on age. I would say that a lot of people in Belleville are, tend to be, not my age, but you say that, a little bit older. And I think there aren't a lot of things in Belleville to attract people in age-wise, millennials, because they need activities, they need things to do. There are, the things that have been in this Belleville for centuries are still here. The strawberry toast, my daughter enjoys it, but what else could we do to attract younger audiences? And I think it's always important to have younger audiences if you want to be sustainable.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mrs. Bates. What, if anything, do you, oh, I did, all right, now it's Mrs. Bates.
So I think diversity is a big part of Belleville already. I think I see it a lot. I don't think I've ever attended any function and not seen everybody represented from all the different age groups and backgrounds. I think that we do a really good job of having diversity in our community.
Mr. Marco?
In terms of diversity, there's a lot of different things that play into that. And one of the things that I've noticed, being for Belleville and still living here, is we have to do better, I believe we have to do a better job of encouraging different generations to step up into different positions and be part of the process, and be part of the team. Like, as I said, I was blessed to live here and grow up here, and I want to provide those same opportunities for other generations. But in order to be sustainable, there has to be more diversity from, from the youth to make sure we're representing everybody's needs, wants, and desires as an entire community.
Mr. Fielder?
I'm not sure this question's going to, I'm looking at the ages of the folks on either side of the wall. Talking about age diversity, I think I'm already in trouble, but, anyway, that's where the, again, community comes back again. I think we are in a very diverse community. Now, if you want to break it down statistically by City of Belleville, whatever, and I, again, I don't, I looked at the last census, the updated census, and found that in fact, in terms of minority population, we've always had this stereotype that Belleville was the white community at the middle of Van Buren and Sumter. Of those three, and I've asked this question many times, which one has the largest proportion of minorities of those three units? And the answer is Belleville is the most diverse of all three of those. And it didn't happen because of any conscious effort. It came because people of all economic and various groups decided this was a good place to live. And I don't know if you could force it, but I think it's a good idea to at least foster it, if possible. That's, again, everybody has their own. If you go to Sumter, you want to be a farmer? You want to have horses? That's the place to be.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Warren?
I, I think the best place to start, like you said, you've already got a diverse community. What people I think are mistaking is, we don't see them working together publicly. And that goes back to the whole communication thing that we were talking about. You know what, there's a great opportunity in the Parks and Recreation. They've got three people on the board, they could have up to nine. There's a great place to start. And along with that Parks and Recreation, again, what I, what my vision is, get that Parks and Recreation to work with businesses, the businesses to work with the city, the city to work with the DDA, and on and on and on. You want to put on events? You want to have shows and parties and all that? Let's get some businesses involved. Let's get some kids involved. Let's get some, let's get some seniors involved. Let's have some activities. Let's start, start using these parks in the way that they're meant to be and bring a bigger attraction, okay? One of the main things of having a city is having those parks. There's actually laws that say that you have to have parks, so, you know, they're vital. And I sit there and I keep focusing on those parks, but I think that is the key that brings them all together.
All right, we're back to Mrs. Bates. What is your vision for Belleville 10 years from now?
10 years from now, I think we'll have a lovely, thriving downtown that won't just say "Come this Main Street." I think it'll take over some of the surrounding streets. I think you'll see a vibrant community that's using some common space out there every day, no matter the season. I think you will see our new library, that it will be built by then, being huge and thriving. I would hope to see that more people are coming across and that Belleville is now a destination spot for people. I've seen other shop and dine campaigns in other cities, and I think that by, I would hope that in 10 years, we'd really be thriving in that. I think that you would see the light removed from downtown and the surrounding areas, and really improved upon. I think you'd just see a beautiful, thriving city.
Okay. Mr. Marco?
I agree. I feel like we're so close to something even better than what we already have. And I think in 10 years, that close-knit, vibrant community that still remembers the roots of where, of how it was founded, and all the small-town, close-knit relationships, becomes a place that is absolutely a destination, where people are trying as hard as they can to live there, to open business there, to attend the schools, to be a part of the community. I see the lake continuing to be what it is today, which is one of the best-kept secrets in Wayne County. But I'd like to share that secret with other people and use that as a tool to foster better relationships and a more sustainable economy, to help with those things and offset some of those challenges like our budget, which is very much tied to our revenue, tax revenue.
Mr. Fielder?
Yeah, I think Kelly mentioned the 2020 project. Some of you might remember that from a number of years ago, in fact, 18 years ago, I think it was around 2000. We envisioned what life was going to be like in our community 20 years from now. And I suggested at the last meeting that we should pull all that stuff out and see. And I think we'll find out that those, you always are aware of the things you didn't do, but many times you don't realize all the things you did accomplish, and how much different it is than it was 20 years ago. And I think that's 10 years from now. We're going to say, well, we didn't really get that done, but slowly will accomplish a lot of things just by staying with it and by cooperative activities with all of our neighbors and by hard work. So I'm hoping that's what will be the process.
Thank you. And Mr. Herman?
I think in five years, we're all going to throw away Facebook, and we're all going to get out there and actually interact. And that's actually what it comes down to, you know? We do do a lot on Facebook these days, and we forget that human contact. And I've been out there, I've been trying to keep that human contact. But I'm from Toledo, so sometimes I'm sitting there looking at somebody, and I want to say hello, and I'm like, I'm going to let them ask me first, because I still have some of that anxiety of, you know, is it the right thing to do? I feel safe in Belleville, okay? So I have to overcome my training, which was, you don't speak unless you're spoken to. And I have to, and I have to interact even more. So, you know, if nothing else, that's the one thing that I, that I would like to see is, get off our phones, get off our Facebook, and let's get out there, and let's, let's use some of these activities to our advantage. You know, let's talk to each other and find out what we're all thinking. We're in this together. It's not, you know, I don't want anybody to vote for me. I want them to vote for themselves, okay? That's the way it should be. You know, your direction, your dream, that's what we need to hear, and that's what, that's what we're supposed to be up here doing.
And Mrs. Fox?
So I'd like to see Belleville be a city where people drive to and not leave. So often, people come to Belleville because they're trying to get somewhere else. And that's because, once they get here, they don't know exactly what to do. We have a beautiful slogan downtown on the lake, but no one experiences the lake when they get here, because there isn't much to do on the lake as a visiting person in Belleville. So I want to see that being fully utilized. I'd love to see some sort of active entertainment on the lake. I think that would bring people downtown Belleville, dinner crews, or just a reason for people to come here and see the lake and use it and see that, wow, this is Belleville, I didn't know this existed. A lot of people don't even know that Belleville has a lake, and I think I'd like to see that being expanded.
Thank you. The next question starts with Mr. Marco. Should the City of Belleville and Van Buren Township combine, be one municipality?
Yes, so I do think that City of Belleville, Van Buren Township, and Sumter Township should look for ways to partner, because I think that makes sense. And again, in terms of sustainability, I think partnerships that make sense, relationships that make sense go a long way towards doing that. But to do it for the sake of doing it would be counterproductive. And to do it for the sake of just cutting the bottom line would decrease the quality of life that we all talk about in terms of how much we enjoy living in the city currently. So I think partnerships need to make sense, and they need to be clearly communicated, and they have to have a plan, a destination as to where we're going, and a reason for why we're doing that. So I do think there are opportunities. I think those opportunities would be wise to pursue, but they have to be done the right way for the community, not at the cost of the community.
Mr. Fielder?
I think my feelings have been very strong on this for a number of years. Again, 20, 18 years ago, 19 years ago, a former township supervisor and I had this conversation. And basically, I said, "Look at the map. You've got five times the votes. If we merge, you'll have the politics, but we'll keep the name." And I think that's still the way it would work. Plus, the system right now requires that the township, we can't become a township. The township has to become a city. So there's certain political concerns that go on. The only alternative then is cooperate without probably a political union. I don't see that happening. I'd like to see it, because I'm cutting my own throat. But I think down the road, it's inevitable, but just as a practice right now, politically.
Maybe I don't understand the question. I don't know why, partnerships are great, but everything that we do should be partnerships. Everything, if it's a community, it's a community. But it's Belleville, it's Van Buren, and we've all got our own interests. We all, you know, the more, the more people you have, the more you get lost in the shuffle anyway. If we're having a hard time now, saying we're not being heard now in a small city of 1.7 miles, why wouldn't we make that a bigger problem? If our voices aren't heard today, why would they be heard if we are in a larger crowd? And we're one of the few that's saying, oh, I'm not comfortable with that. But the partnerships always make sense, you know, especially when it comes to the financial situation that Belleville's in, which is actually fairly decent, you know? It's not, it's not horrible. We just don't have money to just throw out there at whatever we want to. So we have to be frugal. And I honestly, I think they've done that job well. You know, they've been very frugal, they've watched their pennies, and they've done a decent job. How do we move forward? That's what we're asking.
And Mrs. Fox?
I think there is something to be said about a small city. That's where I grew up, and I think that allows you to make connections that you wouldn't make in a larger city. At the same time, there, I think there is a clear division between Belleville, Sumter, and Van Buren Township, a little bit of tension between the three of them. And I think by merging all three of them, Van Buren Township clearly has the power of control shifted in their direction, and I don't think as Belleville we want that, because he who holds the money holds the power.
And Mrs. Fox? I don't think that merging them would be the correct decision. I think that partnering with them is the right decision, where partnership is needed. In a previous city I lived in, we had the schools in partnership, we had the library in partnership, we had the fire department in partnership, and I saw it work very well. I think you think of being here at high school makes me think of classroom size. They limit classroom sizes for reason, and that's so that you can get that personal touch. And I think that if we expanded upon Belleville to a larger city encompassed with the other townships, that we would lose some of that. So I think it's important to keep it how it is.
Next question starts with Mr. Fielder. Do you think that we need more police and firemen, and if so, how will we pay for them?
Obviously, I'm not going to say no. The answer would have to be yes, to be politically correct. The more, more logical answer is to say, I would trust the professionals to make public policy decisions, this be the police chief, fireman, or make recommendations as to what the proper staffing is. And then it's up to the elected officials to find funding or to find alternatives. It can't be funded. And that's basically, I think, what we've been doing for the last year. We're now back at full staff in the police department. The thing we discovered unfortunately is, and it's changed, we have difficulty keeping police officers because we're a starter community. We can't compete with the guys across the bridge when it comes to money. That's no problem. But I think that's one of the things we have to do, is we have to always keep that in mind. Also, staffing is always going to be a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Well, I'm going to throw it out there. I'm going to say, I, I think, yeah, we can always have more. I think the ones we have are doing the job that they're set out to do. But any business or any, any situation where you're having people for hire, you always want to have that backup, you know? Right now, it doesn't look like we can afford that backup. And that's when those partnerships come in. Again, we're back to, you know, Van Buren and Sumter. Those partnerships are vital at this point, because you don't have that backup in your budget. You know, as your budget grows, which goes back to how do we bring the revenue in? And the revenue isn't going to just come in, you know? I mean, I was fortunate, somebody drug me in. They didn't really have to drag you too much. But they asked me to come here and help them out, and I wanted, I wanted to be here. But you're not going to get that unless you get them here and show them what you got. And there's a lot here, and I think, again, I can't reiterate enough, that I think the staffing at this point is fine. I don't know, could it always be better always?
Thank you. And Mrs. Fox?
I think it's a matter of want and need. Do we need more police officers? I have to say no for public safety. I don't think we need more. I think it's always nice to have more. I think if we get more, what will we do with them? Perhaps that question will have been answered. How would we strategically place them so that we are getting our money's worth? I think those questions have to be answered before I determine if we should have more. I think how do we use the ones that we have, and if we would get more, what would we do with them specifically?
Mrs. Bates? I think that we can always use more police and fire. I think how would we pay for them? We would, like Tom said, we would have to look to our elected officials to try to figure that out. And also trusting the police and fire chief, if we needed more, when we need more. But I think this would also be a good opportunity for our community to get involved and see if we could branch out with our neighborhood watch programs and things like that, so that we could help them a little bit in the system.
Thank you. Mr. Marco?
I do believe we need more, and I think it's on a couple of ends. I think, one, as a police officer in today's, I'm not a police officer, but as a police officer in, in modern times, I think it would be great for a police officer to respond to a situation, every situation, with more than one person. I think it could, it could be helpful for everybody involved. Another police officer to help de-escalate the situation, and another police officer to add safety to the officer as well as the civilian they responded to. I think the challenges we have public safety-wise are recruitment and retention. And Councilmember Fielder alluded to the retention of our police officers. We also have the problem of retention with the fire department. And I think we need to look into grants, which is something I have a lot of experience with, specifically with public safety grants to help offset those costs and allow us to plan for them. And I've worked on at least five different grant types for it that we're working on through the city as well.
Next question starts with Mr. Brennan. What will you do to bring new business into Belleville, occupy old buildings or building new?
I think I alluded to that earlier. It's not something where I'm going to sit here and wait for them to come here. I actually have a list. I have a top 25 list of companies that I want to talk to. And I, you know, I've actually talked to a few, and actually some new ones came from those conversations. But we don't want the big evil empire businesses, so I'm looking at smaller, small, medium businesses. Roasters are a good one. Roasters can serve a dual purpose. That's why I've now said it twice. They can, they can sell online, they can have a coffee shop up front, which would in turn bring another business in behind it, probably a bakery would be the most likely. Behind that, you know, there's a lot of other options, because they all have to feed each other, you know? So you start with one key, that's your building block, and you go from there. And we now have a building on Main Street that's going to show the design for a new building that, you know, if that's what you want to build, that's what you're going to have. So we have everything in place that we need, except for somebody to go out there and bring them here.
Thank you, Mrs. Fox.
I think I agree with Jeff to an extent. I think he has some great ideas. I think Jeff has some great ideas, and I agree with a lot of those. I think a coffee meeting would be fantastic. I'm a coffee drinker, so I would be, I would not be opposed to that. But at the same time, I think that the marketing has to be amped up for Belleville. People need to know about Belleville. They need to know what there is to offer. But at the same time, we have to do some improvements first. Because if I'm a business owner and I come downtown and I see the state of some of the buildings, the aesthetics, I'm going to think twice about bringing my business here. And I look at the market, is the market going to support it? Those are questions I have to ask as a business. So I think that we need to make sure that we're marketing ourselves and that we're supporting the business that we already have, so others are more likely to come.
Mrs. Bates? I think that we touched on a lot of the things throughout our discussions and what my fellow candidates here have said, but I think that, you know, the partnerships with the DDA, the planning commission, the city council, and most importantly, the residents, town hall forum, and finding out what they would like to see in their city, taking a look at what would benefit us that we don't have, what would bring people here to Belleville that other communities maybe don't have, maybe we could get a unique edge on that. In my past community, I worked very closely with the economic development director, and I think that we could look at how we could partner with the institutions we already have and making sure that we have somebody that would be in charge of that and bringing that new business to Belleville.
Thank you, Mr. Marco?
I think the way to attract new businesses to the city is to start by having a framework that makes sense. And part of a framework that makes sense involves input from every aspect of the community, small business, and as well as the people that reside in the community and visit the community, obviously. But I could imagine as a startup business, it would seem daunting to find all of those resources that you need, to sift through all of the ordinances, to go through the sign ordinance, and to address all of those challenges as a mom-and-pop-type startup, as a true local business. startup, um, as a true local business. And I think we need to plan, uh, as a community to address those challenges, because I'm certain that there's, uh, room for compromise in these, these, um, with respect to these issues I mentioned, like the sign ordinance and, uh, the accessibility of our current, um, information. And I think the new website will be a great place to house those things.
Mr. Fielder?
Thank you. Um, again, I, I, I don't wanna sound defensive of the past, but I think the process has been going on for a long time, and the old catch-twenty-two, you know, what comes first, the businessperson or the setting? And I think we've done a pretty good job of creating a setting that is, that is appropriate. And I go back to the demographics again. I, I can't believe that a businessperson, be it an individual or a, a large organization, is gonna say, "We aren't gonna come to Belleville because the street hasn't been, been striped in the last three or four weeks," or something like that. They're gonna come because people are here. We have to find ways to get people downtown, get people to, to be here, and that's, I think that's the challenge. And, for example, um, the, um, Planning Commission right now has already, already agreed to redefine the term retail, because, uh, and we've changed that already for some buildings. So, I think that's a positive.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, we're going to start with Mrs. Brooks. Please elaborate on your community involvement focusing on the last couple of years.
So, my, my community, to be honest, my community involvement has been minimal, because before I moved to my recent position, um, my first three years in the city, I worked evenings. So, everything that happens in Belleville happens during the day. So, I think that, um, I'd like to see, um, opportunities for people to join communities and be on communities in the afternoon. So, I, as much as I am active in the community, I, I work in mental health, and I do the 5K walks for NAMI each and every year, because I believe and I'm passionate about that. But as far as being active in Belleville, it, I would certainly say it's been minimal other than in my local community, because, you know, there's unfortunately, I don't think we have to work to live.
Mrs. Brooks? Well, this is the part where my husband probably wishes I wasn't as involved as I am, but I really enjoyed it, and I think he does too. Um, I think it's both in my work and in my neighborhood community, I tend to be really involved. At work at University of Michigan, I am a wellness coordinator, so I, through the Wellness Champion Program, I help to promote health and, uh, activate teams and keep them motivated. I serve on Planet Blue, which is one of our green initiatives. And then, um, in the community, I, as soon as I moved to Belleville, I jumped right in before I actually even was in my home to find out how I could be a part of our homeowners' association, and I came right in and ended up leaving it as the president of the association. I joined the Planning Commission, and I'm always looking for where I could volunteer in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Marco.
Um, I wouldn't elect without the, being a, a part of the local community in terms of going to all the events, and I was fortunate, uh, to grow up with a very close family, and they're always doing events. I have, uh, two younger sisters, and then between my parents, so the joke was, when you get one of us, you get all of us. So, we've been to a lot of events over the years, and my girlfriend has a very close family too, which is the same way. So, if you get one of them, you get all of them, and now you get all of us. Um, and I've been on the Planning Commission for about eight years, uh, until I, I filled the vacancy, um, City Council for the last year. Um, but I also like to have fun, um, in the community as well, and one of my favorite ways to have fun in the community is to go to local fundraisers, um, whether it's, uh, Council for the Arts, or, um, something new that we're working on for the, the VFW right now, and Memorial. Um, there's just so many different opportunities to be involved, uh, in ways to do it in a, in a fun way as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fielder.
Well, I, I could list all of the various things that I'm involved with, and, uh, but, those are, will be available in paper, whatever. I think the bottom line is, you don't get involved in those because you want to basically have a list of multiple activities you're involved in. They sort of, they sort of, like Topsy, they sort of just happen. You, I've been involved with children all my life through education, all of a sudden I'm involved in youth programming, I'm board directors of this and that. Uh, I'm involved in Parks and Recreation the last twenty-seven years because of our wish to expand opportunities in parks, stuff like that. So, it just happens. So, you get involved in a lot of things. Sometimes they overwhelm you. Uh, I always used to joke that in the good old days, uh, with the, uh, the nine-month-a-year job, I could spend a lot of time at the summer home, that now I now commute, but that's, that's part of the process. You have to be involved in as many things as you can to accomplish it.
Thank you. Mr. Vernon?
Yeah, I, I really have a hard time toot my own horn. I, I just, um, you, today you see me in a suit, tomorrow you might see me covered head-to-toe in mud. I just, whatever, whatever I think I can do, I've been told that I've gone too far at times. I've mowed lots that were empty, that, that the grass was too high. I've picked up trash down Main Street. I'm not, I, I do interact with the Chamber, the DDA, I do, I, I interact with them. You have to build, again, the partnerships. You have to have those relationships, and, and just like anything else, in order for them to grow, you have to, you have to nurture them. Um, I'm just the basics, you know? It's, if you ask me to do something, I'm gonna do my very best to do it. Um, I don't have an organization pinned, put on my, on my lapel and say, "You know what? I, I belong to this group." I, I just don't. It's, uh, I try to, I try to do my own thing and do the best for everybody. You know, if I don't want it to be that way, then I, I try and say, "Can we do something about it?" And if I can actually physically do something right then, I will do it.
This will be our last question, and we'll start with Mrs. Bates again. What are your future political aspirations?
So, this is, um, my second sub. I would say Planning Commission was my first, and this would be my second. And, as I mentioned, my heart goes completely into my community, so I can only imagine that becoming involved in City Council, whenever the time would be right to move on from that, that I would like to look into State Representative or County Commissioner, where I could even expand upon what I've already learned.
Thank you, Mr. Marco.
Uh, my future political aspirations is exactly what you see right now, uh, and that is, that's serving in the city of Belleville and Belleville community. Uh, my career, um, I'd love to work in another great community, but, but it's, it's not my hometown, and that's where I wanna be. So, this is my way of coming back and doing something, um, as part of the community for where I live. And, uh, that's really my focus going forward, uh, is, is to, uh, be part of the, the City Council, and/or a Planning Commissioner, or whatever, um, may be out there, but specifically local is my political aspiration.
Mr. Fielder?
Um, I always said that I would never get involved in anything that had a letter after its name. I still believe that sincerely, especially if you believe in local government and being successful. I see there was a bill introduced a month or so ago in state legislature which would allow townships to run as nonpartisan. I think that would be a great thing. Uh, I still don't, I still don't know how I was a milican Republican and then became a liberal all of a sudden, and then became a Reagan. Labels are ridiculous when it comes to the local government. You either perform and do things that people respect, and, uh, you move on, and, and continue to serve, or eventually, like I said before, the ultimate goal would be to be able to miss some council meetings by spending the entire summer at the cottage. That's the ultimate goal.
Mr. Vernon?
I, I don't have any, okay? Let's be honest. I, I'm not a politician today. I'm not gonna be a politician six years from now. I'm just not that kind of person. As a matter of fact, all I wanna do is I wanna learn the process, help as many people as I can, and if people want me on that board, I will do everything I can for them. And the first thing I would do for them is, I wouldn't get paid that first year. Why would you pay somebody to learn their job? You know, so that's, that's, that's my outlook. I would just take that money and put it into Parks and Recreation, start funding some stuff around the, the city that, that's gonna help in, in the future, and keep growing from that. I, I'm, I'll never be politically, you know, a politician. It just isn't gonna happen. I, I, I like Belleville, I like helping, I like to be a part of, and I want, I wanna get as many people heard as possible.
Mrs. Brooks?
My political aspirations, I have none. Um, I, I like my life as I live, I enjoy the city of Belleville. I, to be honest, I'm, I'm amazed that I'm sitting in this seat, because I am not, absolutely not a politician. I believe in getting things done, and sometimes in politics that is so difficult to do. So, I, I have no political aspirations. I'd love to see, I'd love to be involved, and I'd love to be an impetus for change, but I don't want to do that from a high seat of politics.
Thank you. We're going to go to our closing statements now, and we're gonna start with Mrs. Brooks.
Okay, look at him. So, thank you so much for being here and for listening to us. Thank you, man, to the League of Women Voters, for putting this on. I so appreciate it, and I'm so passionate about service. Um, I serve in the Air Force, which I'm so proud of, so I'm passionate about veterans and serving those veterans, about service in general, and I think that this is a great way to be of service at the city of Belleville, and to bring some of my, uh, training and diversity from traveling and being in the military to now working in research to bring innovation to Belleville, bring some change. Change is always good, it's hard sometimes, but it's useful. And I think also having a background in counseling, being able to relate to people, being able to, uh, influence communication and, and model effective communication, I think that would be grateful as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and, you know, I think part of my training, if you will, has been, I've been attending all these meetings, and since, right since I moved in, I got really passionate about the city of Belleville, and I have continued to remain passionate about that city. So, now I'd like to jump in on the other side of the table and go to work for you. So, I thank you for your time.
Mr. Marco?
Also, thank you for your time, and I'd like to thank everybody on the panel as well. Um, I'm sure we can all testify that running for office is not easy, uh, between filling out forms locally, getting petitions signed, making sure things are, are set in terms of the county as well. It's a big process, so, um, I'm happy to be a part of this group, and I feel like it, it will make us all better in the long run. Um, but, uh, we've mentioned the bridge a few times this, this, uh, evening, and I think in terms of symbol, uh, the symbolism of that bridge, that's really, um, what I'm hoping to do in terms of, uh, with, with my roots being in this area, is basically be that bridge from the past to the present to the future, and find a way to bring us all even closer together. We have a ton of great activities downtown. I'd like to sustain that and, uh, continue that, from the car shows to the art shows to the music lakeside, um, and everything in between. Booville, which is coming up, uh, by the way, as well. Um, so really, my whole goal is to serve. If you see me out in public, I'd love to talk to you. Any questions? That was actually one of my favorite parts, was going around and getting signatures petition-wise, because it gives you the opportunity to connect with all of those people, um, and to see what matters to them, because now everybody has the opportunity to go to the meetings. Um, so, thank you for everybody for attending and, uh, taking the time on your evenings.
Mr. Fielder?
Yeah, thank you for everyone for, for being, thank you for putting this on. I appreciate the opportunity to, to meet folks. Uh, everyone at this table, uh, with the exception of this hook, and I hope that you, that changes shortly, uh, I think we're all believing the same thing. We all believe in public service, and everybody out here is involved in that in terms of getting involved in activities and whatever. I would suggest that everybody in the audience, and probably that's why you're here, is also involved in community in some way, involved in some sort of public service, be it elected or being on a board, or just being in an organization that provides that. And I think that's, that's, again, that's the driving force of local government. Uh, somebody said, uh, uh, again, all apologies here, but, you know, I like to think that, as an historian, that I am a politician, in the pure sense of the Roman Republic, that a politician is somebody who basically provided services to the community, services to people. And, uh, I think that's the purest form. It doesn't have to be an evil word, and I think that's what local government officials strive to be, are true politicians. And I, I'll use the Cincinnati reference again, or the Cisnes reference in terms of, of where I'm coming from. Uh, Cisnes, if you remember, the, in the Old Republic, the head of the legion was basically chosen by lot, when there was a war, it'd be fought. And Cisnes was a farmer who basically had no skills other than just farming and maybe a few days carrying an axe around or something, who knows? But he was selected to be the general. And after a successful campaign, it was assumed that he would then become a politician in the sense of running a Roman government, whatever, and he was asked politely, you know, "Which position do you want in the government?" He said, "No, I just wanna go back to the farm and be a farmer." And I think that's the way most of us tend to think of local government and our responsibilities and, so...
Thank you, Mr. Vernon.
I wanna thank you for this tonight, and, uh, I, I appreciate everybody that's here as well. Um, you know, communication is key. Lee Iacocca said that, and I think we've hit it several times tonight, without that communication, and I think it is a pretty big breakdown. Um, you'll notice on, maybe someone, some people have already gotten them in the mail, I've got my number out there. You know, give me a call. I may, I may not answer you right away. I, I do do other things, but we have to have that line of communication. We have to have that voice. We have to open our ears. Two ears, one mouth, say less than we hear. Um, but the whole point is, we all, everybody here, I, I've met Gwen tonight, but everybody else, I've, I've known them for a couple of years now, and it's, I have the utmost respect for the people on that panel already. I have the utmost respect for everybody on this panel, and I have the utmost respect for everybody in this audience as well, because we've taken our time out, we've tried to learn something new today, and I learned a lot tonight, to be honest with you. Um, and that's another key for me, is, is keep learning. You know, excuses are the found, the building blocks to, to failure, and I just don't like the word "no." You know, I'm tired of, hey, this compared, you know, other cities have done this, well, look how small Belleville is. I don't care how small Belleville is. How much work does Belleville have in it? How much can, does Belleville want to, what, what they say they want? But it takes people coming out like this, not on our Facebook, not on our phones, like this, getting together, knowing each other, knowing each other's dreams, and how can we achieve that together? Not by ourselves. You know, so when you go in there, you think, "Who's gonna do the best job for me? Who's got the same dreams and the same goals that I have, whether it's me or whether it's one of the others? I don't really care. I want the best person in that position that we can possibly have. No hard feelings, no, I'm not gonna talk to these people anymore, nothing like that. We just move on."
And that ends the questions. We thank the candidates for participating in the forum tonight, and the Van Buren School District for allowing us to use their facility. We're also grateful to Belleville High School student Courtney Grievous, who videotaped the forum tonight. A link to the forum will be available within a week on the league's website, L W V NorthwestWayne.org. We thank all of you in the audience for attending the forum to learn about your candidates. All the candidates running in this November's election were also invited to participate in the League of Women Voters Voter Guide, a publication you can access online by visiting Vote411.org, or you can pick up a print copy from the library after October 1st. Election Day is November 6th. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. You will be asked for a picture ID when you go to vote, but if you don't have a picture ID or don't have it with you, you can still vote by signing an affidavit of identity. This concludes our forum for this evening. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. (applause)